Please stand and join Vice Mayor Thomas. And flag to the left, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the prayer, please.
Father God, we are so grateful, Lord, for your wisdom and your guidance and those that you've appointed to lead and to guide and to give that wisdom. Father, we pray for our community tonight, for our neighbors, for our friends, for those of us here in this room that represent Guthrie and those that you've appointed to represent Guthrie. And Father, we just praise you, Lord, for these people that have given of themselves and are continuing to give of themselves. Pray that you would continue to bless them in their lives with wisdom, with guidance, and with blessing. It's in Jesus Christ that we pray. Amen.
Call to order our special city council meeting of September 10th. I am number two on the agenda. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any? No comments, announcements, or recognitions? We do have a proclamation. I'll come down here and read it. If the members of the local chapter of the DAR, Daughters of American Revolution, would come right here. You want to take turns reading this, or you want me to? Okay. All right. This is a proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Congressional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this significant document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Stephen J. Gettling, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Ladies?
Yes.
Now we can have the photo.
Okay, good.
And I'm right here next to Tall Sarah. So that is good.
Now smile, Steve. There you go.
And James is our semi-official photographer.
Did you verify that picture?
You want to say a word? No? No. Thank you for bringing that forward every year. Okay. Number three is the consent agenda, which is significant in length. We have items A through J. A is the approval of the minutes of a special city council meeting, which was our retreat held August 9th. B is the approval of minutes of city council meeting of August 20th. C is the approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of August 29th. D is the approval of budget amendment number six, which moves some donations to general fund and airport fund. E is the approval of engagement letter with Crawford and Associates for accounting and consulting for fiscal year 2020. F is the approval of civil defense sirens maintenance agreement between the City of Guthrie and Goddard Enterprises. G is the approval of the agreement between the City of Guthrie and Logan County Community Services for temporary shelter for juveniles. H is the approval of renewal of Honor Park lease agreement with the City, between the City of Guthrie and the American Legion. I is the approval of professional services agreement with Dr. Robert Warden as the medical director of the Guthrie Fire Department EMS. And J is the approval of contract between the City of Guthrie and NORPS to provide information, technology, and consultation services.
I want to pull one, if we can.
And I got three, and I want to pull some.
Okay, I want to pull E. And just to discuss.
And I want to pull G, I, and J.
I'd make a motion that we approve except for E, I, and J.
Second.
E, G, G, and G.
E, G, I, and J.
Okay. G was not mentioned in the original.
I'll amend it.
Amended. Do you agree with the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items, less items E, G, I, and J.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. unanimous approval from everyone that's present to approve the consent agendas as amended. Item number four, public hearing, 2020 budget.
Aren't we going to go through and discuss them?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Let's move back and discuss then consent agenda item E, which is the engagement letter with Crawford and Associates for accounting and consulting for 2000 year 20.
So I pulled that. If you could, if you could explain, I know what that is, but up for the people watching, if you can explain what the Crawford and Associates firm does for us and the ancillary services that they may provide in the event that we needed them.
I will try to explain, and then Kim may have to add to my explanation, but many years ago, dating back to around 2009, 2010, prior to that, when you had an auditor do your financial audit, they would also prepare your financial statements and then audit from that. When the company down in Houston and their auditors got into the shenanigans where the auditors were doing things they shouldn't have done, they changed all the auditing rules. And now the company that does your financial statements have to be different than the one doing your audit. So it created a two-step process. And so the majority of the tasks that they do for us is our annual financial statements. And to do that, you have to be a CPA. So any town that doesn't have a CP on staff has to go out to have that done. And so like in the last year, it was $44,000 to do a financial statement. And we spent a total of $46,500 because there was some various things they did on the sinking fund, there was mileage. So the majority of it is clearly the annual financial statement, but then there are some times that we will need some advice from interpretation on statutes, on how you can use funds, like the meaning of capital improvement, those kinds of things. Did that adequately address your question?
Yeah, but go ahead, Kim. I would like.
What I do, I mean, once I close out the year end and I reconcile the triofallance, I start sending them reports so they can start preparing the financial statements.
And so approximately, we spent.
I just wanted everyone.
Sorry. I was just clarifying. So approximately, we spent $45,000 last year on those services.
$46,446 is what we spent in 2018.
But my understanding is you have to be audited.
Correct.
Yeah.
And you have to have someone independent from the auditors do the financial statements. And you can't do them in-house unless you have a CPA onboard.
So if we had a.
That has the experience and qualifications.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted the whole council to realize what Crawford does.
Okay. Item number G, do we want to, did you want to discuss that?
Do you want to vote them one at a time?
Want to get it all through.
Do you want to do them all at once? Because it's going to get complicated.
Well, I can make a motion to approve E.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. By five to one vote, the approval of the engagement letter with Crawford and Associates is approved. Item number G.
On the Logan Community Services, I decided when I was up here Saturday to sit down and review all these annual contracts that we renew. And it's been so long, nobody on staff could remember explaining why we actually give $1,500 to Logan Community Services and what the justification was, because we don't pay them to address juveniles that we take down there. So my recommendation is that we pull that one and ask Logan County Services to come make a presentation to the city council to justify why we would continue to give them $1,500 every year.
I'll entertain a motion then to pull that from the consent agenda for later review.
I'll make a motion to pull.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. unanimous approval from those present to pull item G from the consent agenda for later review and discussion with Logan County Community Services. Item I.
On I, Dr. Warden's contract, there is language in their own liability insurance. And Dr. Warden carries his own liability insurance for all activities. The original intent of paragraph six in that agreement titled insurance in the agreement was an effort to try and protect him under the Governmental Torch Claimed Act when he performed services for Guthrie EMS, which legally cannot be covered under the Government Torch Claimed Act as a contractor. And also, our coverage through OMA does not cover him. So our recommendation, and Dr. Warden is in concurrence with this, is to strike paragraph six and then approve the agreement with that modification.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
unanimous approval then to approve the contract with Dr. Warden with the exclusion of paragraph six.
Correct.
In the contract. Item J.
Item J, modifications to the agreement. In the intro, I noticed that it's still tied back to the RFP in 2015. It says fixed rate for preventative maintenance, $900 due monthly for servers and Cisco network devices named in the RFP 2015-03. This will be updated to also cover all servers and Cisco network devices purchased since 2015. So it's an administrative change. And then in paragraph three of the agreement, it states, "NORPS carries no professional liability insurance and therefore Guthrie so remedy against NORPS for any perceived or actual errors or more malpractice committed by NORPS shall be terminated to this contract." In visiting with NORPS, they now have professional liability insurance that covers any NORPS team member performing work for the city. This phrase needs to be deleted from paragraph three, and staff recommends the agreement with these two modifications.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that with those modifications as stated. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. unanimous approval from the council present to approve that contract with the two amendments as so stated. Item number four is the public hearing for our fiscal year 2020 budget concerning general funds and miscellaneous funds. See what?
Let me hand these out first. What I recommend that we do tonight is first open the public hearing. And then once you open the public hearing, I will make a PowerPoint presentation that's on the screen there. And then city manager and department heads will address questions from the city council. And then I would recommend city council entertain comments from the general public and then close the public hearing. So if you want to open the public hearing, then I will make my presentation.
Okay. We are now open public hearing on our 2020 budget.
What I handed out to you is a copy of this presentation in case any of the documents are hard to read. What I've done on our sales tax revenue, there is 3.75%. Of course, the three-quarters percent goes to the CIP fund. So when you're talking about the general fund, I just pulled out the 3% that goes to the general fund. So in, we have a full year now. And so for the current budget year, our sales tax revenue was $5,580,000. And see if I can get this to work.
I got their wings again.
Yeah, it's not advancing.
Are you trying to zoom it?
No, I'm trying to advance and use the pointer. So.
Use the pointer?
Yeah. This is a different pointer, let me, or a different mouse. Will the sides advance?
Oh, roll it. I think you said roll it.
Well, that's what I was doing, but.
He's wanting to advance a point.
I want point first.
Here comes a help.
Is it not turned on? That might be an issue.
Batteries, that's the problem.
It wasn't turned on. That's what I was.
FF switch.
I took the wing away.
Well, maybe not.
I'll just get Justin to advance it.
You might not be seeing the remote.
That's okay, Aaron. I can work with this. If Justin will just advance it when I'm ready, this will work. Okay. On the, kind of the brown outlined on the left at the bottom, it gives year-to-date total. So the current year, the sales tax, the 3% went to general funds, $5,580,000. If you look at the prior year, which is the yellow, it was $5,422,357. So sales tax this year as compared to last year was down 6.7%. Or in dollar amount, it was $363,625 less this year than it was the prior year. I would point out that the FY '18 year, the year before this one, was a very significant year for us in sales tax revenue. If you go back to the '17 year, which is the one on the lower right, you'll see that in '17, we only got $4,977,000 for the whole year. So the current year is $82,000 or 1.5% above the '17 year. But when you compare it to the year that was an outstanding year, it is down, but it's not like it, the bottoms fell out of the world. It's still more than what we got in '17. If you go to the next slide, Justin. This one is on the city use tax. And again, on the right-hand side, or left-hand side in the brown, if you look at the year-to-date total, $642,325 in revenue. And the year before was $403,546. So our use tax this year compared to last year is up 59 or almost 60% for an increase of $238,778. When you combine those, if you look at the chart on the lower right, and you look at sales tax, the 3% that goes in the general fund, and then the use tax through September, last year our total was $5,825. This year it's 5.7. So combined the difference, we're down $124,000 or 2%. So if you just look at sales tax, we're down 6%, almost 7%. But when you look at combining the amount of use tax with the sales tax, our revenue's only down 2%.
Why do you think we're down the sales tax?
If we could go to the next slide, I think we'll explain part of it. This is through 11 months. But if you look at the motel tax, if you compare this year's motel tax to last year, motel tax is down 13% or $30,000. And I think the petroleum industry has moved west. And in 2018, we had a lot of crude oil workers at motels that were spending money in town. This is not the only answer, but I think it is a significant part of the answer when the crude oil industry went west.
When you did see Halliburton all over Walmart and Cash Saver everywhere else.
When you look at some of our big sales tax generators, they're up this year. So it's, we'll have to do some more analysis, but I think if you look at the motel tax, it gives you some indicator of why sales tax is down. Okay? If you go to the next one. This one is a fund balance. When you look at the budget, our budgets can budget part of the fund balance, but what's not budgeted is sitting there. And when you look at the budget, you don't really see how much money's sitting there. So I wanted to provide you the amount of money that is in reserve or in fund balances that is not budgeted. And if you look at the left-hand column in FY 2019, to start the year on October 1st of 2018, our current year, general fund had $1,248,000 balance that was unbudgeted. And if you go down there, the three lines down, the Guthrie Public Works Authority had $1.4 million. Our sinking fund, or stabilization fund, I mean, for general fund had $900,000 stabilization or rainy day fund, whichever you prefer to call it, $659,000 for Public Works Authority. But we had a balance of $7,750,000 in cash for the city.
Starting.
Starting. Okay. Now, general fund, you can use for anything. All these other funds are restricted funds that can only be used for specific purposes. So then the next column over, you can see our estimated beginning balance that we think we will have on October 1 of this year when we start FY '20. And you'll notice that the general fund, even though we have a downturn in sales tax in, then you combine with use tax, is still 2% down because we had so many vacant positions, our balance is going to be 1.6 million. So our actual fund balance went up. If you look at all those together, between October 1 of '18 and October '19, starting the new year in October, we'll have 8.7 million, if you round it off, compared to 7.7. So our financial position has improved. And then if you look at the general fund and come on across, you'll see that our revenue, 2.3 million, this is the top line going across, and our expenditures are 12.5. We're projecting that we will be spending more money than we're taking in, about $198,000. So our ending budget we're projecting for FY '20 on September 30th of next year is $1,444,000, which is still almost $200,000 more than we started with last year.
Are you calling the general stabilization fund, the rainy day fund?
Correct.
Okay.
And so if you look at the general fund's stabilization fund, which is commonly referred to as a rainy day fund, will be over $1 million at the end of this next budget year. And the stabilization fund for Public Works Authority will be at $875,000.
So we made an ordinance at one point, I think, that to have it to $1 million.
Correct.
What happens then? Do we keep, do we stop putting in there and start putting to the GPWA grant date?
That will be a decision made by the city council. Of course, we had to get there first before we worried about that.
That's going to be a good.
And.
One of the funds.
Right, but that's good.
And what we will do is probably start diverting money towards the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
Project. And you will notice that about halfway down, and I don't have a pointer, but there is a wastewater treatment plant fund. And we determined, you'll see $0, the only one that shows zero in the, well, we decided during that budget year, we would start setting aside money for the wastewater treatment plant. And so during this year, and again, next year, by setting aside, we will have 1.2 million in that fund to go towards the wastewater treatment plant. So not only are we positioning our cash flow so that we can make the minimum payments, we are setting aside that cash flow as we develop it each year so that we have that fund, that money to go towards it.
So we'll start out in October with $600,000 in that fund.
Correct.
And one could argue that that's one of the reasons we're over on our expenditures for the year, because we haven't historically put that money aside.
We have, we have tended in the past few years to supplement the general fund from the Public Works Authority to make up the difference. We're trying to wean ourselves from that and take less from the Public Works Authority because of all the demands on the Public Works Authority that we have with utility lines, the wastewater treatment plant, we're trying to get away from leaning on it to support the general fund.
I guess what I'm saying is, had we not put that money in there for the wastewater treatment plant, we'd have been over our expenditures for 2020, is what I was saying.
Our revenue would have been over. But I would point out, it's my understanding, if you look at the general fund, at the end of 2020, we will have 1.4 million.
There you go.
The FY '17 budget year, which wasn't that far off, you started the year with a balance of $300,000. So the city's financial position is becoming stronger. The, and you will have $9 million total of fund balance on hand at the end of the year. If we could go to the next slide. This is the summary of the general fund. And if you look at the first column that I have marked, the FY '19 budget, you'll see total expenditures, we budgeted $12,925,000. If you go on across, this year, we are budgeting $12,534,000. thousand in expenditures. That's a decrease from the budget in two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty of three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars or three percent. So we've reduced our budget from last year to this year's budget by three percent. Our revenue only went down two percent. Um, now, part of that, we have reduced overtime, uh, we've reduced our margin of error in some things. So if we have a, it comes down to a level of trust on department heads and managers. Most cities, uh, they budget more revenue than they, they know they will use because in overtime, if you have a major event, we have a big storm go through, that money's there in case you need it. But you don't always spend all your money. Uh, but I don't know that that level of trust doesn't seem to be there today with all of our city council members. So we've trimmed that. If we have a major event, we may have to come back and amend our budget and move some money from the fund balance to do that, but it would be subject to something like a major event happening. The fund balance, um, at the end of this year will be one point two million. Uh, the fund balance at the end of next year is budgeted to be one point four million. That's a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar increase. Our beginning, or our, uh, revenue was three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars over expenses. So for this year, because of all the vacancies, uh, we're using half of that, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, to go into the balance and half of it to fund next year because we're projecting, even though we've reduced the budget, we're still projecting we're going to spend a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars more than our revenue. That works short-term. We can't, we can't year in, year out, take from the fund balance to balance our budget and spend money that we don't have in revenue. But this year, we will spend about two hundred thousand dollars more than revenue, and we will make that up out of fund balance. But I think our fund balance is adequate enough to do that. Uh, in our budget, uh, we did the step increases, but there's no cost of living increase. Um, if we were to give cost of living increases this year and spend even more than what we're taking in, if our sales tax doesn't change, then we'd be in even a bigger hole next year because once you give a salary increase, it's there, you don't take it away. Uh, we added one position, an accountant. Um, and I would have to say, uh, on background on that, the mayor came to me three, four months ago and said, what one position could we add that would assist you and give us better administrative, um, situation? And I told him that a, uh, administrative assistant with accounting skills would be what I would add. And, but I said, I'm reluctant to do that because sales tax is down. Then when we got into the budget process, Mr. Long and Mr. Channel proposed a similar position, an accountant or administrative assistant. Since three people had supported that, I decided to put it in the budget. We are getting more and more grants, uh, and some of our department heads struggle, not with the day-to-day administration of the grant, but the financial management on the spreadsheets, on managing the funds and make sure that it's accounted for, that we got good documentation, that the money's going where it's supposed to be, it's separated out. That will be a big assistance by having somebody with an accounting background. Um, there could be tasks that this person would be assigned to look at, maybe some, uh, internal controls that we might do to, uh, better manage our city. This is no reflection in my mind on the finance director, Kim Biggs. Over the last seven years, uh, the finance department or utility office has taken on many new assignments without additional staff. They've absorbed payroll, they've absorbed accounts payable, uh, and other functions. Well, there's only so much capacity that one department has if you're not adding people. And I think they've reached their capacity. And so they may have the ability, but I don't think they have the time to do these things. And every department we have has grants. Then, uh, we adjusted some positions to part-time positions and eliminated some positions in public works.
Can we go back?
We can.
Okay, I'll wait for you to finish and we'll go back to this.
In public works, our, a starting wage for equipment operators currently is ten dollars and sixteen cents. By eliminated position and taking one to part-time, we have put in the budget thirteen dollars an hour. Our public works, uh, equipment operators, both on the chief, Guthrie Public Works Authority and the general fund side, will now start at twelve dollars and thirty-five cents with six months of experience and obtaining their CDL, they will be at thirteen dollars an hour. We can't fill positions in our public works department because we just clearly are not competitive for equipment operators. This is probably not where we need to be, but it's a step in the right direction. Now I'll stop and answer questions on this page.
So on the accountant thing, um, that's how you have it listed as an accountant.
Correct.
Um, but what you just described to me, personally, I would, uh, I find value in an executive administration type person that has an accounting background. Okay? Not an additional position, but making sure that that existing executive position has those skill sets. And so that's what I think needs to happen, not a whole new position. Uh, we can, we can get out for a lot less than what's budgeted here. If you take the, if you take that initial, uh, executive assistant's salary and then you, and you add on a, a significant bump to get that accounting background behind it, uh, then you got something. Uh, you don't have to have another whole position to make that happen.
And what I would suggest is, if you all fund this position, your, your end funds it. The decision to hire staff in what their assignment is, is the city manager's role.
Okay.
So even if you fund it, it's still the final decision of city manager to fill the position and, and set the duties of that position. So just because you budgeted it, I think then it will be my job to figure out the best way to structure it for our operation, given the funds, within the funds that you have allowed me in the budget.
Well, then what I would like to do is have that, have an open discussion on that's the only funds that are allowed for the administrative assistant. Okay? And the existing funds don't exist anymore. And so then you do what you want with it at that point, uh, and you go ahead and hire the proper person that you need, uh, for your support team.
We don't have an existing position that you're describing.
You don't have an administrative assistant.
We have a, uh, administrative assistant that is more or less, is secretary type, that provides this secretarial support to buildings, code enforcement, city planning, uh, HR and myself.
You don't have a dedicated.
No, we all share that one person. She multitasks and she provides administrative support to all those departments, not just dedicated to my needs.
My question is, we just approved, I think, forty-six thou- not an amount, but essentially what we spent last year, forty-six thousand for someone to do our, help prepare for our audits. If we would not have approved that and taken that money and took the money that you also have budgeted for a, an accountant, you know, we probably could get a CPA that could multitask and do what we need for our, our taxes or prepare our whatever, not our taxes, but prepare our reports and also financial statements and also do what you need them to do in addition to. Cause I don't know how many hours they're actually working, but look, but by looking at their rate sheets, we're not getting a full-time person out of them by any means.
But don't we have to have an outside?
No, it can be an inside CPA.
If it's on staff, we don't have to have them out there.
Is that right?
But Crawford does give you more than just an accountant, right? They're advising us on the laws.
Yes, and, and what I would, what I would recommend is if we hire an accountant, one, we're going to have to see what's available in the labor pool.
Sure.
And, and I'll give you an example. At a meeting the other day, Oklahoma City said they had five hundred vacancies. Midwest City, when they were talking about public works, indicated that thirty percent of their public works department is vacant. Um, so we're going to have to see what's out there in the labor pool that we can attract. And it, it's not just pay or our location, there's something like three hundred thousand vacant jobs in Oklahoma right now. So first, we're going to have to get this person on board and see what skill sets. And then we're, we're sitting here a year from now, if we have someone that has a CPA and has the skill sets, then we might talk about, do we need Crawford to same extent? But we're not there yet to make a decision like that. We're at least a year away before we see what we have. Then we can talk with Crawford's and see if we can do something different.
Anything else on that page?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, the next page is just a summary of the Guthrie Public Works Authority. And you can see our budget for, uh, the current year is eight point five million, uh, or eight million, five hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, and, um, next year's budget is eight million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand. And we're projecting our year-end balance, uh, this year at one point four and be one point seven. Again, we're trying to accumulate resources to meet the obligations of the Public Works Authority with the highest level being the, uh, new wastewater treatment plant, but we also have to upgrade our water tires as well. So we have a lot of needs and we're trying, we've got a long ways to go, but we're trying to position ourselves to be in a better financial position to meet the needs of the city in the future. Next slide is just questions. So now, uh, myself and department heads will try to address any specific questions you have on the budget.
Questions from the council.
I'll just make a statement back to the accounting thing. I thought you had a dedicated person for you. I did.
I hide it well, don't I? Yeah, when we went through the, um, when I came here in two thousand and seventeen and we did the mid-year budget to make it work, not only did we eliminate several positions, but we created multitasking where.
Right.
A lot of people picked up a lot of tasks. And so planning department, uh, had their own admin assistant. We combined all that into one position. So my admin assistant provides support to economic development, planning, code enforcement, HR and myself. So she's pretty busy.
I would say in regards to the budget, you said that we could sustain it maybe this year, but we couldn't continue to do that. I just think that's a slippery slope. I don't know why we wouldn't just go ahead and just not do it now.
The, the reason I think, you know, I pointed out, if you look at, um, sales tax and the uh, use tax combined, our revenue stream from those two sources is down two percent. We reduced our budget three percent. I think we can look at the future, I think we've made a major step this year. I don't know that we can operate in, if we do more reductions and still provide the services that our residents want. I think that if sales tax continues to go down, uh, then we can do that over time. I mean, we're only out of a one point six million dollars balance, we're only taking two hundred thousand. Um, you know, I would like to do it over time rather than just, I guess, rip the Band-Aid off all at once and, uh, there be unintended consequences where we're not in a good position to provide the services. I think over the next few years, we monitor our financial situation and if we need further reductions, we will continue to reduce our expenditures to get there. I think this is a good first step and still allows us to budget that all the department heads and myself are comfortable with, that we can continue to provide the services that we've been providing. Not trying to be argumentative, but that's how I see it as administrator.
On the line item, um, in economic development, the professional services, uh, went down. Have we changed our contract for, uh, professional services support to economic development?
That is a fund, we no longer contract out for recruitment of retail. Um, visiting with the gentleman that we used to re- uh, for retail recruitment, um, he agreed that it's kind of like you, uh, you hire a fishing guide and you go out fishing several trips and you don't catch any fish, uh, you eventually don't use that guy. Um, and it's the same.
I think I know that guy.
Um, it's the same way in economic development. If you look at, at where we're at on retail, we're not in a position right now to go land big things because if you look at our community, we're a town of twelve thousand. And then ten miles down the road, you've got a community that is a hundred thousand. Um, their household income is almost double what our household income is. Uh, if you look at poverty rate, the poverty rate's higher. So a lot of retailers know that if they put something in North Edmund, we're going to go there to shop. And so we don't really need to have someone, we're paying thirty thousand dollars a year to go out recruit when they, the likelihood that they're going to hit a wind force is, is not very good. So we have taken that in-house. The individual still tries to recruit for us when he has an opportunity and pitches this, but he's not getting paid for it with the ideal that if he does land something for us, we will accommodate him or, or reward him in some way, the fact that he brought something to us. Um, and we are actively working at in-house and so we are trying to target, uh, we're working with a retail, uh, not recruiter, but a company that does retail development to try to work with us on a site down at Seward and thirty-five, which we think may be an attractive site, and target some specific businesses, retail businesses that we think might, um, be attractive to that area. So we're taking a little bit different approach. On the industrial side, uh, of course, we don't have a shovel-ready industrial park. Uh, so being in a position to respond to, um, industries is limited. You all at the retreat this year, uh, made a commitment to move forward and our eighty acres out, uh, by I thirty-five at the north exit, uh, to, uh, make it a shovel-ready industrial site. And it will, um, make us more competitive to submit, uh, responses to RFPs from industries looking to expand or relocate. So we're, we're trying to position our better, but we're trying to use our funds as wisely as we can. I hope that was a fair explanation.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions? So. Any other questions of Leroy on the budget?
Well, of Leroy or of staff?
Either one.
So, I'd like to talk to chief for a little bit on, on the line item up here under police operations if we could. So, I'm just trying to get, and I've, I've brought, I talked to Leroy already about this and, and we decided it may be best for you to explain. Okay, so, we budgeted last year 1.4 million and then, but we had an actual of 1.1 million, about 300,000 less. And then, but now we're budgeting 1.3 million, about 200,000, 180,000 more, whatever it is. And I'm just curious, did, last year, did operations go okay for 19?
I mean, define okay, are you asking?
I mean, okay.
Were you shorthanded? With all those positions?
Yeah.
Yes, we are shorthanded, we're down five people.
Okay.
And we have been almost two years.
But how did that affect morale and general day-to-day? I'm trying to get my hands around the increase from 1.1 to 1.3 on operations.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me. We finished at 1.1 this year is what you're saying, and we asked for 1.3 next year.
That's our projection.
But what we do is we, we, we budget for every position, whether or not it gets filled or not.
Right, but...
And then at the end of the year, whatever's left over goes back into the general fund.
Okay. So, police operations would be police on the street then?
Correct.
Okay, and then the administration would be staff in-house or...
Correct. Administration covers like three employees, communications, obviously covers communications. Operations cover the patrol guys, CID covers all the investigators, and SROs cover the school.
And the other thing, you can survive with vacant positions, just like we do in Public Works. But when you run with that many vacant positions, you get into situations where you have people working additional overtime. And that takes them away from their families, it affects morale, it, you have people that are tired out working the street and that's not in our best interest when we have major events. It's tough to get people available because of the additional manors. There's a lot of factors that it would not be in our best interest to not fill those positions if we can find people to do it. And so, we want to fill, we think that is the minimum manning for, to provide the services to our community. Yes, you can do it if you have to, if you can't fill those spots, but it's, it's not an ideal situation and it, it is a concern. And that's why we budget for all those positions and that's the difference is if you've got five vacancies, that's, that's a significant amount of money you're not spending, but you need to spend it because you need those people.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, I wasn't trying to knock the operations side of the police department, that's not my intent here. I just wanted to know, how come we were at 1.1 and we're budgeting 1.3, but yet, last year we budgeted at 1.4, 100,000 less than the 1.3 even? And the question about morale, I asked right up front, you know, how did that affect morale of being down positions to where people, just like Leroy said?
They're tired and grumpy.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. So how do we go from 1.4 then in 19 to 1.3 in 2020? I guess that operation somehow we shaved, I looked at it like we shaved $100,000 off the budget somewhere.
Well, one thing I'll tell you is, is the budget is always a fine-tune thing and I cannot tell you exactly why we, we shaved $100,000. But part of the problem is, is that over time, people have been paid out of accounts they shouldn't be paid out of. And so, Kim and I have aggressively the last couple of years tried to get people in the right account, so we have an accurate, an accurate accounting of what the heck is going on. So, I, we, we've had CID people paid out of operations for several years, the investigations people when you have an, an investigations account for them to be in. It's, it's...
And, and another factor in that is when you have someone that is maxed out in pay who retires, then you have, then you bring somebody in that's at the entry level, there's a pay difference.
Yeah, I get that.
And we've had some retirements. And additionally, when you have retirements, you have to pay them their accumulated sick leave and, and vacation time and comp time.
So...
So some of that 945,000 was paying the lump sum payments to people retired, and then you go to lower salaries on entry if you've got people that are maxed out at top pay retiring. So that's part of the difference there.
So reducing from 1.4 to 9 million to 1.332 million was not by design?
No.
Well, I guess too...
I was trying to hope it was. Okay is where I was going with it.
And I, I think, of course, there's some things that you don't control, you know, like the, the health, the health, the health insurance issue, which I think is costing you guys about 25, $27,000 more. And it has throughout all of our salaries, which is of course, the major component of, of our budget. And I think I asked you when we had our preliminary budget, that same question about salaries going up, but also overtime not going down.
Correct.
And you said the same thing, you had people accounted in the wrong departments in the past. So, but I still see that you've got, your salaries gone up, the, the overtime you're, you're showing flatline. But from what, what we're actually spending, we're spending more in salaries, but just a little bit less in overtime. You would think that there would be, as one, as salaries go up, overtime would go down comparably somewhat.
I guess my question too is how likely are we to, I mean, if we look at 17, 18, 19, and then look at 20, at 17, 1.14, 18, 1.19, 19, 1.14. Now 20, we're proposing 1.33. Like we've made a little bit of a jump there.
Well, we actually reduced 100 grand.
Huh?
We actually reduced 100 grand from...
From what it was budgeted. Well, from what we budgeted for last year, yeah. But we're down in sales tax anyway. I mean, thank God they didn't spend it.
Right. Yeah, but on the actual, I see what you're saying, it's all 1.1 across the board.
Yeah, so do, I mean, that 1.33, how many positions does that fill that aren't filled now?
I don't know off the top of my head, we have five openings right now.
Well, see, this is why we may need a workshop, so that we can have this information. I was hoping to be able to glean all of that from tonight.
I don't know what else we can tell you at the workshop that we haven't already told you.
I think another issue that you, you're overlooking with the overtime, that overtime is, is big, and I noticed that myself, it's pretty good size, but the reason he's got big overtime is because he's a short man.
I get, yeah, I agree, 100% on that.
We can solve that problem, which we can't, apparently.
We can, I mean, it's, it's super easy, all we have to do is hire qualified people.
But you've got to get them, they're not...
Oh, we, we've got applications every day, but it's not...
Everybody's short everywhere.
I mean, we, we, we have standards and, and they either meet them or we don't hire them.
So I'm just pointing that out, that that's why you're, you're flatlined on the overtime instead of coming down, because you still have that problem of not being staffed as well, as well as you should be.
So, police operations, you have 18 officers, right?
You're looking at it, so you know better than I.
But you only have 13. You're five short.
Yes.
That's significant, that's almost a third.
Yes.
I was just trying to hope for reduction, that's all, that's the reason I wanted to talk about this. I was going to give the kudos on the reduction side because I know some council people look for reductions. And I was thinking that there was a gross reduction there, but it's actually going to be a net gain. At the end of the day, when you hired the five people, you're probably not even going to be able to do it for 200 grand.
No.
That's the problem.
Right.
So that 1.3 is probably going to be the 1.4. That's where I kind of...
Historically, probably not though. If you really look at historically...
Historically, we won't, we won't hit that number.
Yeah, because you won't have the five people.
You won't have the five, but you're going to still pay the overtime.
But you got a budget for it.
Well, you, you paid the same in overtime that previous year, it was 100,000. So we're, I mean, it's nil.
Are we still on the four-day week thing?
14 days a month, seven days every two weeks.
So is that different than we, than it used to be?
It used to be eight-hour shifts, yes. Now we're on 12-hour shifts.
That's what I meant, we're at 12-hour shifts now.
But you've been that way for several years.
Yeah, several years.
But do you think that that has led to the gross overtime?
No.
No?
No. With 12 hours, we actually get more coverage than we did with eight. All the guys wanted to go to 10, but that requires a lot more personnel than, than this city could support. 12s was kind of a happy medium where we could, where we could, as administration, we could get covered what we need to get covered while giving the personnel more time off to be with their families.
I get it.
Okay. Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Any other questions from the council, from any staff?
I got a question for Leroy. On the, on the unbudgeted fund balances, we talked about this a little bit. I know what they are, but when, what does the city manager, at the end of this, the city manager, and again, it's all trust factor, and I have a tremendous amount of trust personally, you get to, you get to move money around in certain categories without collateral.
The scope of the city manager's authority is I can move money that is budgeted within a department. For example, if you have money in salaries and you don't have a position filled and you need some piece of equipment, I can move within a department. I can move money that's been budgeted from one department to another in the same fund. I do not have authority to move money from one fund to another. I can't move money from Public Works to General Fund. So if it's a transfer from one fund to another fund, that has to be approved by the city council. If we take money from the balance, the, of funds and appropriate that balance to use, that has to be approved by the city council. If we get new money, say somebody walks up and gives us $1,000 and we want to spend that, then we have to bring that to city council to add to our budget. So there's, the only thing city manager could do is transfers within the same department and within the same fund.
So that doesn't fall under unexpended and unencumbered? If I came up and handed you a million dollars? That would be unencumbered and unexpended, right?
It, it would be, but it's not budgeted. You've got to have two things to spend money, you've got to have budget authority and spending authority. And if it's not budgeted, I can't spend it.
Okay.
So if somebody gives me $1,000, I got to do a budget amendment that you all approve to put it into the budget before I can spend it.
Okay.
And that's a little bit of the answer to why the overtime doesn't necessarily go down on, on what the chief was asking for, because if he hadn't budgeted for it and still can't fill those vacancies, and all of a sudden has to spend more than, let's say, the 100,000, then he has to come to get approval from you.
Did, did I explain that okay?
Yes, you did.
Any other questions?
Input from the public.
Okay, this is a public meeting and is there anybody in the public domain that would like to make, ask any questions or make any particular comments? It's open in the public, public meeting.
Chris?
Nobody's moving, okay.
Mayor.
Then?
Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir.
Who is the...
Come on up to, you need to come to the microphone, identify yourself and your, your address.
Don't leave that hat back there, we might want to trade.
I'd like to have that hat.
My name is John Balsiger, I live at 1308 Red Canyon Road. And I was just wondering who our councilman is for that area? And it seems to me that the street up there has gotten into a ridiculous position. The street just before you get to Canyon Bluff.
I appreciate, I want to cut you off, but, but the, the public hearing is on the budget.
Well, that's part of, going to be part of the budget. Somebody's got to pay for it.
Where is that? Was that on, where is Canyon? Where, where are you talking about?
If you go about a mile north of Noble on Pine Street, it's on the right-hand side.
That's Ward, that's Ward 1.
That's myself and Jim Case.
Okay.
Mr. Long and...
I was hoping it was mine.
Mr. Case is not here.
Okay, well, I'll talk to Mr. Long then.
Okay.
Maybe we can get some info, because the, the school buses come down that, that road and there's a big hole. It's been closed off, but it's not barricaded or nothing.
On Pine?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the culvert on Pine?
And a bus comes over there with kids in it and they've weighed, it's a weight, lot, lot more weight on it than what normally is. And they get close to that thing, it's going to bust through. And then there's going to be a heck of a lawsuit, so I think somebody really should be looking into it.
I think it's ought to be taken care of.
Thank you.
Do you want me to make, on the Pine Street culvert that got washed out at the storm, we are working with FEMA and now the Federal Highway Administration to get funding. Well, they will pay 80% of the improvement, but there's a process to go through and we're working with them and our city engineer to get that project done.
And if you start it prior to the approval of that, you don't get it.
You don't get that, they're 80%.
It's coming. Thank you, Mr. Balsiger. Anybody else on public wants to make a comment, please? Okay, hearing none, we will...
Close the hearing.
We'll close the public hearing. And I don't, we'll move to item number five. Discussion possible action for resolution number 2019-15, which is the adoption of the 2020 budget for General Fund's miscellaneous fund.
I want to make a comment if I could, real quick, that, and we've done some of this in the past, that, because I've spent a lot of time on this budget and I, I think others have as well. And, you know, we can make amendments throughout the process and this budget has to be a working document. This isn't the holy grail. At the end of the day, it has to be a document that could be changed. And I think from my conversations that staff is willing to make those accommodations and meetings and potential changes for us as a group. Is that correct?
Yes, I think tonight you approved budget amendment number six for the current year and this budget, it is a living document. It's not etched in stone and can be amended at any time. And if there's further studies throughout the year and recommendations to amend it, the city council can amend it at any time.
And if I'm not, if I'm understanding things correctly, the expenditures in the proposed budget are down 3%?
Yes.
Yes.
So, obviously there's been staff work to make that happen and, and...
Well, I think we need to have ongoing meetings to start doing reduction across the board, kind of like James is suggesting there. I don't think that has to happen for the approval of this budget. I think that it has to happen, we can't just let that go away. At some point, we have to start realizing that within a couple of years from now, this particular budget might not even work because of a position that we may find ourselves in with the kind of monies that we have to spend on some of these high-end items out there. I'm going to make a motion to approve based on the fact that we'll be able to amend it, is what I'm going to do.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I would second it and I would say that I would also thank the staff for the hard work they did on this, because it's obvious when you go through it that everybody tried their best to shave. I mean, you don't come up with a reduced budget without working hard on it. And I know they spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of time just reviewing it, so I appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other... Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. You announced approval to approve resolution 2019-15, 2020 budget for General Fund and Miscellaneous Fund. Item number six, discussion possible action to approve the 2020 EMS agreement between the city and Logan County Emergency Medical District 1.
Fire chief will answer any questions. This is the normal process we go through with the agreement between the Emergency Medical Service District I-1, which is the Guthrie School District, and they budget 90% of their projected revenue, and they're allowed to retain up to 10% for operating expenses, which includes some administration and an annual audit. They've been very diligent in the money that they have not spent in the past, then what they do in future years is they provide that to us to help buy ambulances. So, so the, the money that they've had left over from the 10% they held back, they have also, as it becomes available, make that available to help support buying ambulances. So the arrangements worked well. We hope to get a contract in the near future with the new EMS district on the other part of the county, and we're working on that. But staff would recommend that we approve this, but Eric's here if you have any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions of the chief? Submit your votes.
I'll vote strength.
See the votes. You announced approval to approve the 2020 EMS agreement between the city and Logan County EMS District Number 1. Item number seven, discussion possible action to appoint a city resident to fill a vacant Guthrie-appointed position for the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Advisory Board through June 30th of 2021. There are a couple notes on that one. The advisory board voted three to two to recommend the appointment of Cheryl Paget. I will just add to that that unsolicited, I received the input from a person on the board who was not at that meeting, who was supporting Mr. Wade, and also the editor's note identifies the mayor recommends appointment of Lamar Wade. Council has informed me that, that the resolution developing the airport authority doesn't identify that, that the city manager makes the nomination. So the nomination is open from the floor, even though the last three have been from myself, but I understand that, and if that's your opinion, I'll go with it.
The only thing I'll crack is you said city manager.
City mayor.
I'd make a motion.
Correct.
And we're not-
I'm gonna nominate Cheryl Paget as the board voted.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to nominate Cheryl Paget for that, that position. Any other discussion? I will say that both candidates were, I interviewed both candidates, and I thought they were, they were both quality candidates, and I felt that there were some, some things that, that tilted my, my recommendation towards Lamar Wade, which was identified in the, in the minutes or in the agenda here. Anyway, we have a motion and a second for the appointment of Cheryl Paget. Submit your votes, please. Submit your votes.
You have it.
Submit, I'm abstaining.
Oh, okay.
Vote of five carries the appointment of Cheryl Paget to the airport, the Guthrie Edmond Airport Authority, Board, Advisory Board. Item number eight, discussion possible action to approve the city Guthrie Streets Committee recommendation for solicitation of funds for the fiscal year 2019 capital improvement program. Tenny, are you presenting that?
I think we should defer, we have a city council street committee, and I think we ought to defer to them initially to make the presentation. The only thing that I would point out is remember, this is just authorizing us to go out to solicit bids. It's not awarding the contract. So you will get another bite at the apple once we receive the bids as far as approving awarding the contract.
Okay, the members of the streets committee, there's one member from each of the wards. Would you like to make your comments, please, on the recommendation?
I want to make a comment that we go ahead and approve this, like Tenny was saying, is that this is, this is not a vote on what we're going to do. This is just to put out the bids to see what we can get done. We haven't done anything for two years. Is that correct? All right, and we're only doing, what, about a mile a year? If you, if you combine all of that together, it's about one mile, I think. So we're- Three-quarters of a mile, okay. So we're doing 140 miles of road, and it's gonna, none of us will be around when this all gets taken care of. So, you know, if you have any questions to ask, I mean, you know, we, we went back and tried to get something from each one of the wards, and I think that's what needs, you know, that's what needed to be done. That's why Mr. Case didn't vote on it, but Z's on there, Jim Case is on there, and I'm on there.
So when you guys picked this, did you think about the 180,000 in there that, you know, when this does go out to bid, do you, I know we don't know if that's gonna cover it, probably won't.
We considered how much we had, and we considered the idea of waiting on some of this stuff and letting that money build up so we can do more bigger streets later, and it, and we got some things that need to be done now.
Yeah, and we are gonna take some of that money and put into the account for the bridge.
And I don't, I don't think that it matters, really, in my opinion, whether we have something in all wards or not. If you got a street that needs it really bad, that's where it goes, and that's the way I see it. It, it doesn't matter. We shouldn't be splitting it up that way because we'll never get everything done, because we'll have to have, you know, if you got one major thing that needs to be done in one ward, then, then that's where the money goes that year. But that's just my opinion.
But the proposals did reflect-
They did.
Projects in all three wards.
But, but I don't think it has to. I think we need to get off of that.
I think First Street's pretty bad between Noble and Cleveland. That's a rough ride right there in front of the funeral home.
You, you get to the point where you go out and say, well, I'm gonna go out and fix, well, Chris Evans has got a road out to his place. Well, I'm gonna go out and fix Chris's road and say the rest of you don't get anything. Well, you know, we're getting to the point where we're just picking and choosing, and we've gotta go fill the holes over here, and like, you know, Tenny was saying, we've got places that haven't had blacktop on it ever, but we need to just, you know, we need to set up, like, you know, Z's saying, we need to get off this ward 1, 2, and 3. We just need to go out and say, we're gonna go fix the worst road, and then next year, we'll fix the next worst road, and so on and so forth.
Who was on the Ward 1, 2, 3 thing?
I'm on here, Z's on here, and Jim Case.
No, but he was saying we need to get off of this prioritization.
That seems to be what everybody's saying. How come last time we, we, they said, oh, those, those streets were identified as being in Ward 3 by mistake, and they weren't, it didn't really matter. They were still the worst streets that we considered.
Yeah, the ward where it went made no difference to me. You know, what I was, you know, what I'm not that crazy about is the same thing came back to us, other than we ordered, we put in two or three more spots in, in my ward. But my deal, the reason I didn't like it the first time, I didn't agree with, you know, on Terra Lane redoing a whole street when the guy needs 60 feet of blacktop to meet the end of the road, and his street's as smooth as this desk.
You want to answer that one?
Whenever I go out and I evaluate streets and look at them, I look at, at several different things, from our drainage aspects to, you may have a, a really good, smooth surface on a road, but the entire road may then show alligator cracking, is what we call it. The road itself may be smooth, but you've got that entire road covered in alligator cracks. Water's getting in them surfaces, and if we're gonna have a contractor out there at the time to do 60 feet of road to extend that road to a property owner's house, why not have him go ahead and take care of that entire stretch in that addition while he's there? That's, that's kind of what I look at whenever I'm evaluating them and, and making decisions.
Well, what I was, you know, talking about, we're gonna smear it out while we're there, and then we got, you know, on West Vilas, those pictures I gave you, those things that turn over Volkswagen right in front of their mailboxes, and we can't get anything out there. And I know we're back to this addressing it here, addressing it there, but to me, I just felt like smearing it out on that whole block, smearing it out there behind the Junior High where it's a flat road that could, it could be dirt, far as I'm concerned. Nobody drives on it. It's worthless. It gets no traffic, yet we're gonna pave the block.
I think you're mistaken about nobody driving on that.
They do drive on it.
That is, that's a-
Which road are you talking?
It's also a fire.
The dead end into the back of the Junior, right?
One thing on that road, if I can touch a little bit on it, I pulled it up, actually, at our street committee meeting. We, we pulled the roads up, and they could view them right there, and they actually was able to see the water. It had recently been after a rain, and, and water down both gutter lines, probably two to three inches deep where it holds water. And another thing with that being right there by a school, our fire trucks, if they respond to a fire up there, hopefully never, but setting up a ladder truck on, on a road or a surface like that is probably for sure impossible for, like, the ladder truck or something like that. We want to make sure we try to follow same sta, you know, keep our roads up to a, a level of standards that fits all departments.
So the holes that'll turn over Volkswagen on West Vilas, are they up to standard, or are they ever coming up to standard, or what?
I'm sure it's on our list. We do have a, a list of roads that's a working document. That list, I have it with me over here. It changes daily. As requests come in, and, and we go out and do site inspections on different roads and, and conditions of roads change. I mean, the list that you provided to me, I think we've addressed, for the most part, all of the stuff on Southwest 19th that was an issue. We're working on the one in front of the old, old hospital, started it today. James on the spot up here, it's on our list. Some of these projects have been kind of prolonged because we've been trying to get ODOT to address the one up here. We felt it was part of that project due to some of the utility repairs and stuff. We was not successful there. The spot in front of the old hospital, we tried to get it addressed by the contractor.
That's why I was wondering if we ended up having to do that, or did they?
We, guy Cruz was out there till about 7:30 this evening, still working on it.
You know, the better thing with them guys, and I'm just being a crackpot here, but they want their certificate of occupancy next time. How about you close up our street and make it right, and then you'll get your certificate.
We, we try to make it work that way. If we can get everything in line and, and before giving an occupancy letter, we make sure everything's covered.
We were probably not as forceful on that one as we should have been.
I know you can't really see it much.
I'd like to add the alleyway for Bank First Drive-Thru on your list, because my car falls in a pothole every time I go to the bank, so. I appreciate if that would get on the list.
We can, we can make sure, we can address that.
Was it down here is what you're talking about?
Any other questions of the two members that are here that are on the streets committee?
Here it is.
I'd like to say one more thing, just to, just to say again, all we're doing right here is just simply trying to, to get approval to go out for bid. We may have to come back, whatever the bids come back as, we may have to come back and, and cut some of these roads off. I mean, we, we simply don't know at this point. All we're asking right now is just to get some roads out to bid, to get a project out there.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve this.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote strength.
See the votes. We have five to one in favor of the approving the action of the Guthrie Streets Committee recommendation, so it is approved for the 2019 capital improvement program. Item number nine, discussion possible action to approve task order 137 from Myers Engineering for the Pine Street culvert replacement.
On that one, we want to pull it or table it. It was determined Pine Street is classified as a minor arterial road on the Federal Highway Administration highway system. So the Pine Street culvert replacement project is not eligible for FEMA funding, which is new, something new that we learned. It is, however, eligible for funding through the ODOT Federal Highway Administration Emergency Relief Fund. So we have been working our way through that process, and verbally, we've been told that it would, should be approved, and we are waiting for written confirmation. But as we work through that process, that project has been modified some by as we go up through the layers of ODOT and Federal Highway Administration, so that task order may need to be amended. But it looks like we will receive 80% funding for that project, and a piece of it, we may even get 100% funding.
So we won't have to pay engineering, is that what?
No, you'll still have to pay engineering, but it may be modified as to-
Maybe they'll give it for a bono, they'll give it to us this time.
Pro bono.
So anyway, we still need more information, so we'd like to table that one.
That is tabled.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
The concern about a bus driving down that road, have, have we talked to the school district about rerouting their bus somehow so that they're not putting those buses in that area? Is that possible?
I might like Tenny to address the-
On the, on the Pine Street project, whenever we met with them last Wednesday, we found out that any emergency repairs that we do to this can be 100% funded. So saying if we, a recommend, the initial recommendation from the Federal Highway Administration was, let's think about maybe some signal lights. Get it down to one-way, one-lane road, some signal lights on both ends of it, 100% funded. The more we were there and evaluated the site, the discussion came to, we can go ahead and get the opening of the concrete box, box culvert opened up, remove the head wall that fell down in there, lay us a piece of temporary pipe down in there. This, this thing's a seven-foot culvert, so it's gonna take a substantial-sized pipe, but we can get us a temporary pipe down there, get it covered, and get the road all opened back up temporarily. It is 100% funded. It's, it's under the emergency side of the project. That has to happen before the 30th of this month, because there's 180-day process from the beginning of the storm, when the storm, the date, the beginning date that they set. So we will be moving forward with that. All of what we do to this project is we have to upfront the cost for this project, so meaning we will have to pay for the cost and then wait for the reimbursement through the Federal Highway Administration. So we are looking at getting that road opened back up. We're gonna go ahead and move forward with trying to get it opened up, get a pipe down in there, get on state contract, get some rock hauled in here, and just get, initially get the road opened up to make it safer for travel.
So we are moving towards, I know the initial emergency repair, but ultimately, are we talking about repair, or are we talking about replace?
The process that, that's been explained to us is we have to show them a plan. The engineers are gonna have to show them a plan. All they will fund is initially the repair. So to come in and what's it gonna cost us to repair the head wall that, that's damaged and collapsed? If our engineer can show that it costs more for us to repair that head wall and reattach it to the existing concrete box culvert that's in place, if that cost is higher than what a full replacement cost is gonna be, then they will go ahead and move forward from step B to step C and allow us to do a complete full replacement. So it is a step process that we gotta go through. It's gonna be a little bit timely process, but I think the, the best thing that we're looking at right now is 100% funding. We can get the road temporarily opened up and safe for travel as we make our way through this process.
And what about the vice mayor's question about the- And what about the vice mayor's question about the weight restriction or specifically the bus restriction on that road? Sir?
There's, there's no, we have, we have talked with the bus, the school. Everything's been, been taken care of there. They didn't really have an alternate route that they felt comfortable with for moving their buses over to. The road is passable. We've got narrow road signs up. There's no weight limit. There never has been a weight limit on it. It's just simply a box, concrete box culvert. It's just a substantial sized box culvert. Those do not have weight bearing limits on them.
Okay.
I bet they do. You just don't know what it is.
All right. So item number nine is, is tabled. Item number 10, discussion possible action to accept the 2019 VOKA. Oh, I guess. VOKA money?
Grant.
Grant.
If you would advance to the next slide. And if you'll go back to what I handed out on the budget after the slide, the question mark, this is there. The grant is, is called a 2019 grant, but it's for the period of October 1, 2019 through 9/30/2020. So it covers FY '20 budget, but they call it the 19 grant. This is money from the Department of Justice. It's administered at the state level by the District Attorney Council. And I know that there's been some question and there was a handout here, about 40% of the funds, VOKA fundings have to go a certain way. Well, this is a service program, so the staff providing the services counts towards those signs. And the breakdown of this grant, we apply for it, but these same nine people are deciding how that money's distributed. So they're making the decision for us on how to spend this money.
So we have nothing to do with it?
No. I mean, so, so we don't decide, does this meet the 40% or not? They do. And they give us this money.
But can they insulate us if the DOJ comes in and says, well, the state's wrong. You owe us our money?
Yes, they would be responsible.
They will insulate us.
I mean, we, we can turn it down if we don't want to follow their instructions, but I mean, if somebody's giving you a grant and they have the authority to give it and they tell you this, this meets the guidelines and this is how you spend it, and this is how much we'll give you, this how much you match. I mean, they're in control of this money and it's the same, it says the nine members. Well, this is the same group making this decision.
Since it's a grant, wouldn't they have had to pass guidelines to get the money in the first place?
Well, they have to, just like.
Get the grant. It's a grant to them.
The CDBG grant we got.
Right.
That is federal money from the Department of Commerce. And it's administered by the state under, for small cities. They follow all the federal guidelines when they distribute this money. This group follows all the guidelines for this money.
Or they wouldn't get it, right?
Yeah. So when it says 40%, it doesn't mean 40% of it has to be vouchers for motel rooms or voucher for phone. I mean, the services provided is part of it. It's a service program, so clearly the majority of the expenditures will be paid for the, to hire the people to provide the services.
I just, to me, the way this is broke down, we have $10,000 going into the hands of the end user. Whether it's phone cards, emergency hotel rooms, emergency phones, there's 10,000 and some dollars. And this, the whole thing kind of reminds me of you give the Salvation Army $100 and you grab it because the family that needs it at Christmas gets $2 and the mechanism that dispenses it gets the other 98.
But it's a service program. The services provided to the victims is a benefit to them. It's not just handing them a phone card or giving them a motel room. And I think we got a PowerPoint that will, or a, a video that will explain it more, but the services is part of the program.
What is the service?
When you see the PowerPoint, I think it will help, or the presentation. But on this, the grant is for $207,094 and a match is $34,000. Of that match, $16,309 is in-kind credit for office space that we provide to the program, and we get to count that as a match.
So is that here?
Yes. It's down in PD. The facilities and equipment that's highlighted in the grant column, that $24,924 is money they make available to lease vehicles. We own the vehicles, so we lease them to ourselves. And again, we got that approved. And then the overhead or administration, $11,249, they allow you for administration of the program. That is cash that comes to us. So the money that we get for leasing the vehicles to ourselves and admin, we leave in the grant fund to buy replacement cars when we need to. And this year we'll generate $21,000 towards new vehicles in the future. It is how we use those two sources of revenue. I'd be glad to try to answer questions on this, but we do have a video that I think may answer some of the questions.
Is this something new? Because you and I had a conversation about this. I didn't ever, I don't remember.
Three, four years old.
If we approve this grant, this will be our fifth year running this.
But we, council has never had to approve this, have we?
I think it was an oversight on city staff part. I don't know that we formally have brought it to the city council for approval in the past.
I know we've talked about it. I don't know if was that a, I don't know if was that a.
I know we brought the city council before. I don't know if we brought it every year.
Yeah.
I remember, I remember something about it, but I just was confused that we, I don't remember us ever.
I would point out that I believe that we received an award this year for our program.
The, the two, the two advocates, Trish Mudders and Michael Johns, were recognized by the Chiefs Association for the, for the outstanding work they do in their field.
Good.
So the, the video will come up on the TV screen.
You're not the first one to ask what the service is that we provide. That when we started this program in 2015, we were very unique in that we were the only police department in the state of Oklahoma to offer this kind of service. Not too long ago, I sent Leroy some videos that came from DOJ and they were a thousand-year-old, they look like, and weren't very pertinent. Leroy said, hey, do we have local people that can tell us how it's benefiting them? So I tasked the advocates with finding some of our victims that were willing to talk about it. They're not willing to show their faces, but Aaron did the video right back here for us. So we're going to play the video, and if you have questions after that, I'll be glad to try to answer.
By DHS, and we had to do a safety meeting. Upon my safety meeting, there was an advocate there. They talked to me, told me the services that they offered. And at that time, I didn't think I needed them. In fact, I actually did. They were very patient for me to come to them, didn't push me. It was actually a very easy process. And their arms were open whenever I was actually ready to get the help that I needed. And it took about a month before I called and had to have them come pick me up from my house with the police. After I was picked up and taken to the police station and we were going to try to file a report, I couldn't. The police department hadn't been able to find him. And we went back to my apartment to get my things because I had to go to a women's battered shelter. And there was a police officers at my house to making sure that I could get my stuff and that my perpetrator was not there. They took me to my battered shelter. They got me a cell phone to making sure that my perpetrator no longer get a hold of me. They hooked me up with some services to where I could get some help with the trauma. They have been supporting me this whole time. They went to all of my court dates. And I was so scared that I was going to get hurt. And I had these officers around me, my advocates around me, that made me feel so safe that nothing was going to happen to me. In fact, they followed me back to my town to making sure that I was going to get home safe. And they have done more for me than I could ever have done for myself. And I'm so appreciative because if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be able to feel safe. Where I was, I was not safe. I almost died. They helped me put my life back together by being the support that I needed. And I haven't met anybody else like them before, ever. And so I'm very grateful for them. I am such a better person now than I ever was before, ever in my life because I got help from the victim's advocates.
When 2016, a family member filed for divorce in Oklahoma County, there were accusations made in open court that there was an inappropriate relationship between the father and the oldest daughter. At that time, we were granted legal guardianship of all four children. After the children knew that we had the legal guardianship and knew they were safe was when it all began to bubble out. And the oldest daughter explained that she had been sexually molested by the father. At that time, we notified Guthrie Police Department and the officer showed up with the victim advocate who took her report and assured the 13-year-old that she was safe and they were going to help her.
As things progressed, we also learned the 12-year-old daughter had been molested as well. The 15-year-old boy had been getting pot and alcohol. All four of these children, we found out, had been through some form of abuse during their time with the adopted parents.
Children had also disclosed during that time that they'd made several attempts with different agencies to get help. But each time the complaints were investigated, the children were questioned in front of the parents. So they were terrified and scared to say anything. The advocates, they contacted all the law enforcement agencies that were involved to include DHS. They helped the children to understand the process and what to expect from other agencies involved when they had to speak with them. And this helped to minimize the fear, the anxiety, and the uncertainty that the children had at that time. Today, these kids maintain a high degree of respect for law enforcement, the criminal justice system, because of the action of the advocates. The advocates enabled us to pursue the justice that the children deserved, resulting in the father being convicted of nine felony charges and receiving a 30-year sentence. The process spanned over several years. We could not have done this and made it through the process without the advocates. This is a program that law enforcement should have been providing decades ago. Victims are often returned to productive, positive members of the community they once were. These advocates affect real lives of real victims every day in a manner that does not exist in traditional law enforcement. This program is an amazing example of a department that really cares for the people they serve.
Hi, my name's Anthony Gibbs. I've been working for the Guthrie Police Department for almost 17 years now. Our Victims Services Program, I guess if I had to sum it up in one word, I'd say indispensable. The Victims Services Program was started here at the department four years ago. And just like with anything in the beginning, it took a little bit of getting used to. However, what we began to find was two things. The advocates took a greater role in actually teaching our officers exactly what to do when it comes to violent crime. That training was key in helping us to move forward with providing those services to the citizens. The state law changed during this time and we were required to do certain things. I am not sure that we would have been able to make the transition as quickly as we did without that training for a couple of reasons. One is that mainly every citizen in the city of Guthrie were given the information that they needed to make sure that all their rights were protected, that they could go forward with any type of thing, whether it be some type of financial compensation, or that it happened to be making sure that there was a victim's protective order in place or so on. Additionally, what it did is it protected the city from liability. If any of our officers were to have forgotten to do something like that, we're, we are both criminally as a, as an officer, but we are civilly liable as a city for, for not providing that information and those services to our victims. Time for a police officer is key. We're always concerned about how quickly you can get to a call, how quickly you can stop the hurting so you can start the healing. Now, when we get on scene, if our victims' advocates are able to, and many times they are, they'll actually report to the scene of a violent crime with us. From that point forward now, the officer who initially took the call now can place them hand in hand with an advocate who will walk them through the rest of the process, all the way through charges being filed, going to court. We'll help them with transportation if necessary. There's so many different things that our victims' advocates do that we just weren't equipped to do as a department as a whole. We've come to rely on them, especially because of those staffing fluctuations. I know for a fact that we could not provide the services that we're currently providing to our citizens. So they're absolutely indispensable in that respect.
Very awesome.
Motion to accept the grant.
Second. Motion, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Just congratulations, Chief. I know you were getting the program going. Thank you to the two staff that are heavily involved with this model program. Clearly a significant positive investment by our community to be a part of, small part of the match fund for this. And I think the outcomes speak for themselves. So anyway, we have a motion and a second. Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous to approve the acceptance of the VOKA grant.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item number 11, discussion possible action purchased for the police department, vehicles from John Vance.
If we would advance the slide. Our thought process is to try not to be totally dependent on the CIP fund for equipment and vehicles and try to move more in the direction of grant funds, the general fund. And in what we look at with this program is with the admin money and the money we get through the grant to pay for leasing vehicles by buying our own vehicles and leasing to ourselves. We can use that vehicle in three to five years. In this program, it has low mileage on it. And then we can transfer it to the police department and then buy another vehicle for the victim's advocates and start the process over. So on this one, the first thing, I tried to split this spreadsheet in two parts in your agenda packet. It was one spreadsheet, so it was a little difficult to read. But we will be transferring the existing VOKA that Ms. Mudders drives 2017 Chevy Tahoe and assign it to Bruni. And the other victim advocate's vehicle, we will be assigning to the chief. When we purchase these program, or these vehicles for the VOKA program, we can't fully equip them as police vehicles. And in the case of these two, when they were initially purchased, they weren't police package vehicles. So we really don't want to transfer these to patrol. And that's why it works out well to, the chief needs a different vehicle and Lieutenant Bruni needs a different vehicle, but it's a detective's position, so not being police packages, it works well. When we replace the VOKA grant or vehicles, the next two down, we will actually be buying police packages. So when we do this in the future and we transfer them to PD from the VOKA program, they will be police package vehicles that could be put on the street. The first one to equip it, of course, there's no cost for the vehicle because it's already been paid for. The additional equipment to make it equipped to serve Lieutenant Bruni as our detective is $15,906. The, to equip the other VOKA vehicle that Officer Johns used to assign it to the chief because it does have a little more of the police equipment on it is only $12,623. To purchase two replacement vehicles that will be on the lot in October, 2020 police packages. The purchase of the vehicle and the equipment for our non-police. packages, the purchase of the vehicle and the equipment for our non-police officer VOKA will be $45,000. The limitations, because Johns is a police officer, is not quite as restrictive, so we can put more police equipment. When you take that vehicle and equipment, it's $54,240. And then if you look at buying new police cars, which we have in here as an option as well, the cost is $36,019 if we buy a police package vehicles coming in this October. If we look at the bottom of the sheet and a potential estimate, if we were to order one this year for delivery next year, it could go up as much as $5,000 for the vehicle. If we flip to the next sheet and in your agenda packet, this was all one thing, but again, I broke it out to make it easier. On transferring, we have built up in this fund roughly $105,000 and we will get another $23,000 roughly in this year's grant through the money provided to lease vehicles and the overhead that we provide through our department, but we still get to collect the money. So the $104,000, to equip the first vehicle that we're transferring would come out of the balance of the VOKA grant. To equip the second vehicle would come out of the VOKA grant. And then the new vehicle, the first one that would be assigned to VOKA, that $45,000 would come out of the existing money to grant. And the new one, $31,000 would come out of the balance of the grant and the other $23,000 we would pay ourselves back out of this year's grant as we collected the money. So those vehicles are all coming out of the balance or this year's grant. Then if we purchase another patrol car, we have as part of our reduction of expenditures this year, we were able to move $30,000 into capital improvements in the general fund under the police department towards a new car. So to finish that purchase, we'd have to take $44,000 out of CIP. So you would be getting three new vehicles and you would only be spending $44,000 out of the CIP money. We haven't ordered new police cars since 2017, so it has been about three years since we've ordered new police cars. It takes a significant lag time between when you order them. They don't manufacture police package vehicles around the year. There's a window where they produce them and so there's a lag time. If you don't get your order in and don't hit that cycle, then you have to wait another year and then you have to equip them. That's our first package we present and then we present option one and two under a separate option if you wanted to buy a fourth new car and that would of course come out of CIP and we just present that as an option to consider. If we could go to the next.
Could I ask a quick question first? Okay, so on John's new car.
Yes.
2020 police package, it's $54,240. What's the difference? I know that person's a police officer.
The civilian, they're more restrictive on.
But John's is a police officer.
He is a certified police officer, so they're not as restrictive. So you can put more equipment on it initially and use it in the VOKA program, which translates when, three or four years now, when we transfer to PD, the less we have to put on it at that time.
Okay, because that was my question. Would we have to add more when we transferred it to PD?
We will have to add less than we do.
Right, right, I know, but we'd still have to. What are we adding? What's the difference in the price?
There was a list in your agenda packet. I don't have it committed to memory, but.
Okay, I'll go through it. Don't worry about it.
When we get to that, I'm willing to Chief address the questions as far as the equipment and the need, because I don't have it committed to memory.
Okay.
The next page, if we flip to it now, the police chief's vehicle is a 1998 with $161,000.
You still driving that?
No. It's not safe to drive. And there's been some question why he has an unmarked vehicle. Well, it didn't make sense to spend the money to mark a 1998 vehicle that was the end of its life. Now he will have a marked vehicle if we make this transition. Bruny, because the vehicle he had was involved in a accident during a pursuit, now he's assigned the next best vehicle we had, which is 2002 F-150 that has almost 200,000 miles on it. If we buy the third one tonight, this is just an ideal of some of the vehicles we still have in our fleet that need to be replaced. The actual assignment will be made by the chief. So I'm not indicating that any of these three would necessarily get the new car, but if you just look at these three, you got a 2011 Tahoe with 131,000 miles, you got a 2009 Chevy with 149,000, you got an F-150 with 165,000 miles on it. So we do have some vehicles that are getting to the end of their life. What will happen is we do have some pool cars that are not taken home because they live outside our area that even have more miles. If one of these individuals gets this car, that vehicle may go to the pool for a while until it reaches the end of its life. With that, I would answer questions on that. Don is here if you have questions on the equipment that he's putting on them or need.
Questions from the council.
I don't necessarily have any questions, but for my two cents, before long goes to putting his two cents out. I have a hard time tapping the CIP money for any more police cars. And y'all can do what you want to, but what we told the people when we did the CIP is we're going to do around 120, 125 a year to roll over fleet vehicles. First thing they did when they got the money is they spent almost $800,000 on it. By my figures, to be right with what we promised the people when they gave us the money, that figures to about six years, which is 2022. So I don't care to talk about CIP and police vehicles until 2022. They spent six years at once. We promised the people what we're going to do with the CIP money and every time I turn around, we're trying to dip into it. So I'll be out on that option. If you guys want to go against what you promised the people, go right ahead, but I'm out.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The two new ones we're buying and transferring to VOKA where we're using all grant money, is that a different scenario that you might be able to live with?
I have no problem with that part. I just don't want to be tapping into the CIP and going against what we promised the citizens.
I understand. I just wanted to get the clarification on the other one.
Yeah, the rest, I'm good.
Well, the one thing is with the 30 grand sitting out there, we get the extra one for $43,000, but I guess I'm still a little confused in.
And we're, one more thing. We're still buying them $70,000 police vehicles that I got. They're against my religion too.
Well, that's where I was going. What is the difference, Chief, in the $54,000 one and the $74,000 one? Equipment wise?
Got a list?
I mean, could we do the $54,000 one for a patrol officer and then be safe? And then now all of a sudden, we got 20 grand in it?
Remember the one that we're only putting 45,000 in? Already when we bought it for the VOKA program, it had part of the equipment on it. So you're adding to equipment, not starting from scratch.
I'm talking about a new one.
Yeah, the new one, you have to get by all the equipment.
Right, but do we need to have the $70,000 of equipment or can we do the 50,000?
The 45,000 is staying within the guidelines of VOKA and so that's why you're not.
Right, I get that on those, but what I'm saying, on the third one, number three, that 73.7, is there any way we can trim that up?
That's your decision. All we did was, when we began this process in 2017, Lieutenant Myers is the one that's over my fleet. He and I sat down with the city manager and looked at everything that we thought we needed in a car, struck some stuff, added some stuff, changed some stuff, and that's what we came up with.
Well, those Tahos lasted pretty good and still last in good, aren't they?
Yes, they are. They are.
Versus the Chargers that we used?
No, the Chargers were.
John.
Anexpletive, yes.
So what can you take off of the prototype that we've been buying without sacrificing the safety of the officer and the vehicle?
My, I mean, I've got what I think needs to be in there for the officer that drives the car. And we've cut everything that I'm comfortable with. I mean, but you all are the keepers of the purse string.
Yeah, but that doesn't, the keepers of the purse string doesn't mean a bit if an officer gets injured or killed.
True, true.
Yeah, well, I'm not interested in that. I'm just wondering what we can trim up because like Edmund, I think they pay 40-some grand for their cars and we're at 70, we're twice that.
But they're driving the Chargers.
But we would have.
They're driving the Chargers too.
But we also would need to look at, because this equipment also includes the computer that goes in the vehicle, the lights, the communication equipment. So we'd have to look at Edmund and get their total cost. Just because they buy a car doesn't mean that that comes fully equipped. And so we'd have to compare apples to apples we'd have to visit. And I can tell you, when I got here and the chief told me how much he spent for a car, I said, "Well, there's no effing way you could spend that much money."
That's pretty much what he said.
But he has convinced me, I didn't use the whole term here, but I did when I talked to him. Chief understood it too. But he has convinced me over time, you know, you could take an element off and maybe you sell it at $1,500 for a car. But then you look at it and, you know, is it really worth it to trim $1,500 off a car and not provide the element that is a safety feature, you know, and having the right kind of seats that accommodate our officers with the clientele we deal with and having to wash them out because of the things they do in a vehicle when you're transporting them and making it easier to clean them out. Having the cabinet in the back where you can safely secure weapons, the extra panels in the door to make it more safety, bulletproof. He has convinced me that this is the type of vehicle that our officers need to have and deserve to have to be out on the street to perform their job. So I have to eat my first words that I said when I first come here because in other towns, we didn't spend this kind of money, but I think the police department has done a good job of flushing it out. And so from my standpoint, I've come a long ways in there because I thought there was no way I'd ever agree it made sense to spend that much for a police car, but I think the police department has put together a good argument of why the equipment's needed on the vehicle.
Okay, other questions from the council?
I did have. This massive amount we spent several years ago, how many years ago was that?
17.
17.
2017, not 17.
Two years ago. Two, three years ago.
So, you know, how long does a police car last, average?
Well, Guthrie, they last a really long time. Most normal police agencies get rid of them between 75 and 100,000 miles is the thinking today. We are never going to be in a position to do that and that is one of the reasons why we went with better vehicles.
What I'm getting at is if we can put this off, if we keep putting it off, then we're going to end up spending.
Seven, eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand again in a few years.
Correct. When we talked about this initially.
I like the idea of buying a few now and buying a few next year and buying.
We were in dire straits and it took a lot of convincing of the council that time to buy 10.
Yes.
And it was a lot. And several years down the road, we're going to pay for that too because we bought so many at the same time.
You've got to start doing it sometime.
Right. And when you all approved the 10, or the council time, when they approved the 10, it was, "We're going to do 10 now and, you know, two or three the next year and two or three the next year and two, two, two." And now we've done 10, none, none, and now we're asking for two to four or three to four.
But don't lose sight of what we promised the voters, you guys. You're buying into all this and everybody sitting out there watching tonight is going to say, "They told us two or three a year." So don't lose sight of that. You can buy into it if you want and I'm not against them having patrol cars, but I'm a whole lot more towards doing what we promised the people we would do.
I think two or three years is what we were talking about initially.
If we didn't start out buying 10.
A minute. And if we just get into that same loop of buying big chunks every four or five years, we're going to find ourselves buying 10 again in three or four years down the road.
Correct.
I think we need to get into a cycle where we buy two or three and continue that process.
That's my point.
I think if you can stay in your cycle with your general fund, but stay out of the CIP.
I like that idea too. How can we, and that was my next question, because I like the idea of this 43,000 because we've got 30 grand in the general fund. So how can we fund that outside of the CIP? Can we? Is there a way? There's got to be.
You're five people short.
Five people short, give up one? Or two? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking. How can we fund it?
If we could go back a sheet to cost. If you approve, we got to divide it into 11A, 11B. If you approve 11A where we buy three cars, we buy two for the VOKA and then we outfit the VOKA and transfer them and we buy one new one and we use the 43,000. If we don't fund or hire all our staff, then we could, at some point during this year, what we accumulate because we have vacancies, we could take that money and put that 43 back into CIP, but if we fill the positions, we wouldn't be able to do that. But it's going to take us a while to fill those positions. So there probably will be additional money.
I would be for that if we could not do it out of the CIP.
That was your recommendation?
If we could do it initially out of CIP, see where we're at during the year, we don't fill our positions right away, that money that we save by not having the positions filled until we fill them, we could save that money to go back to repay the CIP that 43,000.
Does that work for you?
What he said.
Why can't we just amend the budget?
Let's just do it out of the budget and worry about if we get positions, coming up with the money for that and leave the CIP alone.
And I'll second it. There was a motion here to go ahead with.
We were still discussing.
I made the motion to take his recommendation and move forward and then he seconded it.
So we have a motion, this is 11A initially.
Well, let's realize that we can still discuss with the motion on the table.
Yeah, absolutely. 11A with it being initially funded, the 44, 45,000, whatever that difference is, initially out of CIP, if there's money left in the personnel account, then they would pay back, it would get paid back during the course of the year and back into CIP, whatever that difference is.
What's the lowest position that you've got open annual salary wise?
30,000.
38? 30-something thousand?
Well, I mean, you're going to have 30, probably 2,000 plus another however much in benefit.
In benefit, so we're the 40,000 plus on the lowest position that's available on PD out of five that's open. So I say, I would like to have discussion here about trying this one time and maybe not doing the CIP on the front end and maybe do a deal where if we have to refund that fifth officer at one point in this year, then we go in and we say, "Okay, where are we going to get that money?" And we find a way to get the money for that fifth officer if we're going to find it. We didn't find those five officers last year. We didn't find those five officers last year. We didn't. And so, what's the, I mean, maybe we don't find them this year, maybe we do. I'm not saying.
Either way is possible.
I'm not saying you lower it to four. I'm just saying that on that, the lowest paid officer, we go ahead and, just like what James is saying, take it right out of the general fund on the front end, and then figure a way to fund it if you come up with that position. I'm all for that. I think that's a great way to compromise on this deal.
I think that's showing better faith to the people than taking it straight out of CIP to start with.
Can we convince you two of that, maybe?
We have a motion and a second on the table.
Can we convince the motion?
I don't know what you changed out of.
Well, what we changed is, instead of taking it from CIP today, we take it out of that fifth position fund in the general fund.
That's what I understood he made the motion to do.
No, he said it was coming out of CIP.
That's what I understood. We were going to pay for it out of the fund, and if we have to, then we'll go to the CIP. But we don't.
The motion was, initially, it's being funded out of CIP.
That's what he was saying.
And then reimburse it if the funds are valid.
Reverse that.
Reverse it.
Reverse that.
That would be great, and that would be an awesome compromise, I think.
So, tell me, tell me what your motion is. Tell me what your motion is.
The motion is to take it out of the fund, not the CIP.
The general fund.
The general fund.
So, we would take the first four out of the Voca funds. The fifth, the third new one, we would take out of the general fund, and then if we needed money for the fifth position when we find somebody, then we can.
Get together and figure it out.
Figure it out.
I like that, and that's a good compromise.
We shouldn't be touching CIP as a last resort, very last resort.
Good job.
That's the motion. Will you accept them?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Awesome.
Just submit your votes.
Got your car.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
And I kept my promise.
Yep.
Worked out. All the way across, gives you tangles on you. You can ask approval from all those present to move ahead with the purchase as identified, excuse me.
I thought that's what you said.
As identified in line item 11A, being funded out of general, the difference of approximately $45,000 being funded out of general fund.
And we pull 11B.
And 11B is pulled. Which brings us to number 12, city manager report.
No report, I thought we had enough tonight.
Okay. 13, city council comments and comments. James?
We had a successful final fifth concert for Red Brick Nights for the summer, so our concert series is over, but we are excited and looking forward to next year. Appreciate everybody that came out.
Okay, Jeff?
That includes the lieutenant governor, correct?
He was there.
Okay, all right. Thank you, staff. I know you guys put in overtime. I appreciate what you've done and what you continue to do, all of you. I mean, it includes the police department, fire department, all the local people, all the guys working the office up here, too. Thank you, Kim, as well. Also, I hope you guys are getting your trees and stuff out of your yard. I will say this, you can shoot me later, mayor, if you want. Thank you to Haze for coming out and cleaning up my yard. It was a mess. I had trees that I did not believe were twisted and turned, so I think we did have a tornado. But anyway, I appreciate them coming and doing it.
Okay, Zee?
I'm not going to add anything.
Ryan? Obviously, thanks. Staff does a great job on all this. I want to commend the council. I think it was an awesome week-long process, really, in going through budgets and bouncing things off of each other at time to time, just to try to come up to cohesive. Council that really stepped up tonight and not only passed the budget, but made some good things happen, and I'm proud of that.
Don?
I agree. It took a lot of work. A lot of us were digging through these papers for a long time now, and I'm glad it kind of came together tonight. They clarified some things, got some things straight in my mind, and I'm good with it. The Red Brick Nights, James makes contributions, so does the city, everybody else. If you haven't been, the last one was pretty good. There's a whole bunch of little kids dancing up there all night long in front of the stage. And, you know, some people, if nothing else, they get to go to that and just forget about it, forget about their hassles for a couple of hours. So, you know, I give accolades to James and the guys for putting that deal together, because I think for some people, it just gives them a break and lets them forget about their hassles for a while, and I hope we have a lot more of them.
Good job, James.
Again, thanks to the staff for all the budget work. Again, a 3% reduction in cost is significant, and it doesn't come without a lot of work and a lot of ingenuity by leadership and staff at the city. So, congratulations and thanks, and appreciate the work that the Voca staff do. I think one of the things that came out that I'd like to comment on is that some of us, maybe all of us, didn't really know all the things you do. And congratulations to Aaron for putting on that video, but congratulations to you all and chief for being a model for police departments throughout the state, maybe nation. So, you know, it's great to lead that parade, is what I would say. So, congratulations and thank you.
Good job.
Okay, item number 14, consider approval to convenance to executive session for A through E. A through D are really looking at the continuation of contracts for the city clerk and treasurer, for the judge and alternate judge, for the city attorney, and for the city manager. And number E is to discuss a purchase or appraisal of real property on Oklahoma, the Double Stop Field Shop in the Farrow's Flower.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Votes?
All votes drawn.
See the votes. unanimous to move into executive session.